All alone, we know it was bullshit. We knew it was bullshit.
If KJ had been white, we wouldn't have had to make this film.
YouTube, fair use on behalf of the public right to know. This is not Boss Dungpravideo. GBR. Gravitas Ventures. Finding Kendrick Johnson Official Trailer. 1,430 Views July 29, 2021. Gravitas Ventures. 89.5K Subscribers. Subscribe. Release Date: July 30, 2021. Directed by: Jason Pollock. Synopsis: On January 11, 2013, Kendrick Johnson was found dead in his high school gymnasium rolled up in a gym mat. Finding Kendrick Johnson is the feature documentary product of a four-year undercover investigation into the facts of this case. From the creator of Stranger Fruit, this new documentary hopes to shed light on one of the most important American stories of our time. So what really happened to KJ? Told through the eyes of KJ's family and close friends, narrated by Hollywood legend Jennifer Lewis, directed by Stranger Fruit creator Jason Pollock, with an amazing team of producers including actor Hill Harper and Space Jam director Malcolm DeLee. Finding Kendrick Johnson shares this truly historic, heartbreaking, and unbelievable story with the world for the first time. About us. Gravitas Ventures is a worldwide film distributor and collaborator with thousands of independent artists. Past films include: Sound City, Armstrong, Above the Shadows, The River and the Wall, and many more. Gravitas Ventures is a Red Arrow Studios company. Justice for KJ in Valdosta, Georgia under Lounes County School Superintendent Wes Taylor. No justice, no peace. Added by George Boston Rhines, Galatian 6:7, St. Luke 4:18. God bless everybody.
I can't do this. I can't, I can't do this.
Now, someone one, where's your emergency?
Yes, I'm calling my son, can't come home from school. Kendrick Johnson?
You know, she said I have German Shepherd. Twelve o'clock, I knew he was dead.
The body had been moved. The scene, in my opinion, had been compromised.
When they said he climbed inside the bed to get the shoes, I heard that was a lie. We opened the body in this particular case, the organs were not there. Paper had been stuffed into the cavity to fill it up.
Body parts missing, evidence is missing.
And we tested it, it was blood. Then we did DNA testing, it was not the blood of Kendrick Johnson.
If it wasn't KJ's blood, who blood was it?
The parents hired their own medical examiner who said this was a killing.
An FBI agent's home was raided last month in connection with the investigation into the death of a Valdosta teenager.
Supporters for Kendrick's family are calling for a Department of Justice investigation.
Why do you want justice?
The Johnsons and their supporters now hope the FBI will get an answer to what happened to Kendrick Johnson.
All alone, we know it was bullshit. We knew it was bullshit.
If KJ had been white, we wouldn't have had to make this film.
Uh... He, uh, went on to wrote an article in the Boston State Times that was Whitewritten by, uh, basically Amanda Usher, the man of mystery getting to know Albert Forrest. And I quote it. Deacon Harry Jipson says that he disagrees with the people who claim the street could not have been named for a black man during 1800s in the South. I don't agree with that. I don't. Ain't no way a black man can have that kind of cloud. And I say yes, it could be if his daddy was supposed to be a good man. And everyone knows that his son was a good man. Uh... He, uh, went on to write an article in the Boston State Times that was Whitewritten by, uh, basically Amanda Usher, the man of mystery getting to know Albert Forrest. And I quote it. Deacon Harry Jipson says that he disagrees with the people who claim the street could not have been named for a black man during 1800s in the South. I don't agree with that. I don't. Ain't no way a black man can have that kind of cloud. And I say yes, it could be if his daddy was supposed to be a good man. And everyone knows that his son was a good man. Albert Forrest was a shingle supplier for the Boston Institute. According to the archives of Lounes County, as I've said before, he dwelled on Oak Street. He lived at 203 Oak Street, which is next door to where the church was built. His brother was the brick mason in that church. His brother was actually the one who laid the brick in that church. Uh, his daughter was sanctuary in that church. He, uh, moved the church from 1840 in Truville when it shut down to over the Valdosta to where a storm took it down, to where they turned around and rebuilt it again in 1868, if I'm not mistaken. I say all that to say, he was an advocate of this community. He did a lot for this community. And I know, I know that some, some people feel that the street could not be named after him. And as I shared with DJ, it wasn't until 1977 of August is when the name went from one R in Forrest to two Rs. Even, even if you go back and research and you go back and look, you'll find the articles on that. You'll find that he was a farmer. You'll find that, um, that, you know, we've got an inspection report. You see it? 1969 inspection reports. North Forrest with one R. 1970, DJ saw this, he can attest to it. So I'm not giving you information that's not here. All back in 1970s. Here's a map, August of 1977. Dr. Knoll can even attest to it in his article. Not seeing the forest or the trees. He even says in his article, as a geographer, "I have natural pen for maps." The 19th century sample map, 1911, 1990, all went to 1940 US census. It was spelled one R. And I went on to take a little bit further to find that it was only spelled one R up until August of 1977. He then goes on to say, at the end,
It's not true.
He goes on to say, well, I'm just repeating what's in the article.
Why is it?
It's not true.
Why?
So, he goes on to give free options in his article. And I agree with his second option. And in his second option, he says to set in honor Albert Forrest to make a declaration to confirm this historical aspect. What I'm saying is that at the end of this, and I'll close my remarks, and as I said before, it may not change anything. But what I'm saying is that we have an opportunity, and I've talked to the mayor about this, and I've talked to the city manager Mark Barlow about this. And we have a opportunity to put bronze flags, I run this by Councilmember Howard Bickers, to put bronze flags, I told DJ, at both ends or wherever, at the city's cost, to do a proclamation to set in stone to make sure that we uphold Albert Forrest's legacy, his standing legacy, this church. And, and I, all I'm saying is that I'm giving you the facts, I'm giving you the information, I'm giving you everything that you can find, everything you can see. And at the end of the day, all I can do is simply say, council members, I allow to make a motion to the table to rename the Forest Street that the citizens of our great community, citizens in this room, and my fellow council members can take the information that I have shared and decide what's the best route for renaming the Forest Street. We owe this to the great legacy of Reverend Albert Forrest, his family, and his church members. Excuse me, I think.
That's enough, that's enough. Everybody is respectful, very in force of the presentation, please be as well. Any other council comments at this time?
What I would say, if you could make the motion on the floor right here?
We got it, but now there's one to be introduced to that from the past, but that... We all, any other council comments?
Can I get some?
We're only, we're only acting on one right now, correct?
Is it a motion to postpone to a definite time? Do you have a definite time?
Postpone until the, um, the people's tribunal, DJ and their group, um, decide that they might want to change. And the thing is, I talked to DJ about it, and I know y'all, y'all work really hard to raise the funds. And y'all work really hard, and I know that there's other names that, the streets that y'all would like to change as well. And I understand that.
Council can give a fast one?
Actually.
No, wait, let me see.
We should, DJ.
I won't take long, I won't take long.
Please sit down, sir, please sit down. DJ, sit down. Just, just go for it, well, DJ.
But I'm just saying, just the table until that time.
You'll need to put a definite time, you need to put a definite time.
I would say, uh, since nothing's going, I mean, I would say probably, uh, two weeks until the next date of our, um, meeting. Council meeting.
Thank you, council. Any other council comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what Councilman Gibbs has brought forth. Um, it's unfortunate that we did not all have that information before this meeting. That being said, what's before us, um, every eye has been dotted and every tear has been crossed. We, um, have approved the renaming of many streets in honor and in memory of many people, local and otherwise. Um, in the cause of that, um, the due diligence has been done, and I would like to call for the question.
Council, thank you.
There hasn't been a second on, there needs to be a second to that motion. If there's no second, then there's no motion.
Do we have a second on the initial motion?
No, you're talking about the initial one or what?
No, 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 Councilman Gibbs, why not?
All right, ju- just in case, I'm sorry, Councilman Gibbs, for not doing that, recede the vote. Uh, can I get a second for his motion for delay? Here for a second, we will proceed. Any other council comments at this time? Councilman Howard?
I'd like to thank Councilman Gibbs for giving us a reason now to name Oak Street after Mr. Forrest. Mr. Forrest, if everything he says is, is true, he lived on Oak Street. So that would be a perfect opportunity to name that street after Mr. Forrest. Little Forrest Street already has a name that the petitioners went out to be changed. Who is named after at this point in time? Is it relevant to what, what our discussion is? The time to do the research and change the name or give the petitioners an opportunity would have been years ago when they wanted it, before council. So my only thing is, I would like to ask council and the mayor what we can do after we vote on this. We can make a lot of this a lot simpler for us. We can change our ordinance, but we can say, no street, no building, no alley, no anything in the city of Valdosta will be named after any terrorist, foreigner, domestic, any Nazi sympathizer, any, any Holocaust denier, anything like that. We can, we can make that change in our ordinance, just like that. So therefore, if we have a street that came up or a building that came up, it, it won't, it won't even be an issue. We have an opportunity right here in the side to let people know. We're not the same as other cities, other states. To name a street right now after President Obama, it would mean a lot to the same people that have been marginalized in this city for so long. And, uh, and, and throughout this nation. You think about the people who lived on that street who, before, and I, I haven't been at Valdosta all my life, but I've been at Valdosta a while. Black people weren't even alive, didn't even live on that street. So now they live on this street, and just a suggestion of saying that a street in 1800s to 1922 is what you say to Mr. Forrest, right? 1837 to 1922. We know black people still get hung and killed as early as the 80s, as late as the 80s in the, in the United States. So for me to believe that, I'm not saying it did, but it's just hard for me to believe. So, what we can do, we have, we have, we have an opportunity here to vote on, on the, um, issues that DJ brought up. And set an example with other cities, all these smaller cities around us, they may look at it and say that Austin do it like anybody. So I'm gonna go ahead, go ahead with Councilman Enoh and, Councilman Coley, and say, let's go get him voted, and right this morning.
Council, good. Any other comments?
I just want to say that, uh, thank you for your work. When I lived on Cypress Town Forest, I moved there in 1970. And my kids could not play with his old forest. They could only go so far. Because the white that lived there didn't allow black history to come into the order. We had the grocery store that was called Colonial Store, where the Salvation Army is there. We couldn't even, we didn't have cars. We had to push our buttons. Well, we got in front of those houses. We had to push real fast because the Caucasian ladies was sitting on the porch and they would say, "Here come the little children coming down the street." I had to walk my children down the street. So for this street to be named, it makes me feel more dignified. Because I know what was on Forest Street under that area from the 1969 and to now, I was in that area. When he said "craft that good," I was in that area. When he said "leave thy scribes," I was in that area. And my kids had, at one point, we couldn't, my kids couldn't ride to buses schools. They had to walk because they were re-outbound, so his kids couldn't ride. I had to pay the taxes for my children to commute to school. Been there, did that, got a T-shirt for them.
Any other council comments? DJ, I think that one quick comment and a humble request, that was a very impressive effort to get those signatures to, to get out the, and their change. I'll humbly request that you stay, uh, stay with those people on that street, help guide them, and, and, and change so that people do not get in the hijacks, get denied, the forms that they eventually do, do, DJ, and then kind of, um, please, I just lived it two and a half years ago living from 18 North Patterson Street, taking my business out of 2325 US Highway 84 East. That simple move almost cost me my business. So please, organize an effort and still get back in to, to assist those people on that street if this is successful here, and just a second.
Oh, where's?
Uh, I'll talk to you right after we take a vote about that. Council, I'll turn to number two for a vote. All voters show a hand. All voters, please. Mr. Mayor. For that reason, I will allow this reference. That goes to DJ. We'll move on to the citizens to be heard. For us in the meeting, we ask that you come forward and state your name and address, if they have to, for the record. Our policy requires that you stay up to three minutes so that others have the time to hear. Please direct all comments, council as a whole. Do not intend to negate individual members of council in the debate. It is the council's policy to immediately follow up with you and your concerns. At this point, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson to represent the group that will ensure that all others have time to be heard, having said that, are there any citizens who wish to be heard at this time? Please come forward and state your name and address. Hold that microphone up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Earl H. Davis. I live at 14 Farnell South. I have lived in Valdosta for 31 years. And the time that I have lived in Valdosta, my cul-de-sac has not been paved. Um, it's been patched. Um, there is a spot that's in front of mine. A area where they said that it is not deep enough for me to actually go and build it. So I've come to ask you if you all would put it in your, uh, meeting or agenda for this, uh, different area to be, uh, repaid. I have all of the signatures of my neighbors that live there, and it's just me and maybe three other ones. three others that has lived there the longest. Um, my neighbor has still lived there for thirty years. I've lived for thirty-one years, maybe one that lived there for maybe forty-five years. But the rest of them have not. So I just come to bring this forward to the council.
Thank you very much for doing so. We'll talk to you immediately after the meeting.
Okay.
Who's gentleman in white here?
Okay, thank you so much.
Your bishop and your minister in Jersey.
It is fourteen Pine Dale Circle here, a Latin American student. Yes. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard at this time?
Yes, I'm gonna come in and pick you back on what this dean said. I am the, uh, my home. My name is Wanda Bennett, Wanda Yvette Bennett. And I'm a, a resident that had, uh, just come here in December of two thousand and twenty. And I'm a homeowner at four Pine Dale Circle in the same vicinity where my neighbor lives. And she had brought it to my attention, she has been in the area, she said she's one of the primary neighbors there, and I'm just praying on board. I am concerned as a taxpayer and a homeowner in the area that this issue is taken care of and that there's any type of way that funds can be allocated to, to get this taken care of, I would really appreciate it. Thank you. And I also would like to say something else that's not pertaining to that. There's another issue I would like to just bring up.
Please do one.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm very concerned, um, about the mentally ill that, um, patrol the areas of Valdosta. Uh, I see a gentleman that walks up and down Venus Road. He's a black gentleman. I don't know who he is. I call him a gentleman because I'm trying to be respectful. Uh, he appears to be mentally ill and he walks up and down. He has, uh, a T-shirt on. Uh, it's, it's poor hygiene. Uh, what, what, what is being addressed here for the mentally ill here? Uh, he needs, he needs hygiene. He needs his hygiene to be taken care of. Is there a place where they can be taken to, uh, to meet, you know, for, for services to, to help people like that?
Uh, Wanda, I'll follow up with you after the meeting with a contact. Uh, they do great outreach. Uh, I'm sure you have that number.
Okay, I said, I mean, I just have one question, your honor. Um, are they able to go out and actually address that individual without scaring that individual to be helped?
They sure can. They're very compassionate in what they do, and if they can't handle it due to mental illness, then they refer to a legacy, a legacy referred to an officer. A lot of times our officers are incredibly compassionate with, with, they'll go out in plain clothes so that they don't scare.
Right.
And so, yeah, it's a great, it's a great effort sometimes. Sometimes, yeah.
Okay, well, I hope so. I hope DJ can be helped.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens to be heard at this time? Please state your name and address.
Willa Rayford, I reside at twelve hundred Lake Park Road. I've been there over fifty years. I'm playing on diamond. So I came out tonight on a serious night while I was on vacation. The city came and digged up in front of my house, um, just digged up the dirt and ditch instead of doing it properly. It's a matter of digging it all up and left it, and it looks real, real bad in front of my house. Instead of putting pipes and doing it right, I guess the idea was just the water go by. I put it through it right, so they just sprayed it real, real bad and real upset by it. Now I'd like for you and the mayor of City Council to look into it and put it back the way it was before for a little time, if you would.
If you'll stay back, I mean, something will come up and address that for you.
All right, that's one issue. I'm gonna be short. Second issue before I get on the sofas, that we are concerned about the positions here in the city of Valdosta for black folks. Uh, system, we can ask for a system black city manager, a system black fire chief, and a system black policeman. So I'm just throwing it out tonight, there will be some local correspondents about this while they were looking at giving some of those individuals who qualify some of those positions.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens who wish to be heard at this time?
Meeting again. I'm kind of how I'm doing two things, seven of the same in East Circle, Lake Paul, and also Associate Cus, representing on the American Express Church. Um, congratulations for changing the name and all the hard work to get anyone to change the name. So this is something else that we assured, except we worked together on the incubator process and the presentation that we're helping you make before. And we consider that and until us move ahead and work together and bring some change to that, thank you.
Any other citizens who wish to be heard?
George Boston Ryan, five zero zero four Oak Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. I too would like to thank y'all for changing the name of Forest Street. And I want to commend the Councilman Gibbs for exercising his rights under our constitution and the law that are in, laws that are in place. He have a right to do that, and I appreciate him for that. As a retired military veteran of over twenty years, I would like for this to be recorded in the minutes to make, to substantuate this truth for generations to come. I have heard the city manager said that no part of the ordinance was changed about renaming streets. I bear witness tonight that he is one hundred percent wrong. The ordinance was changed. I have it on video. And we have other documentation to show that the ordinance that was changed is extremely longer than the ordinance that was. I have that documented, and I will stand before Jesus, Moses, and Muhammad to show that I speak the truth tonight. So let the historic archival record stand that when Minister Rose and the People's Tribunal went out to do what the old ordinance required of them, we are not a crazy people. And I just want the truth to be maintained. That's why I have this on video just in case, because we know too often, the news media don't see us, we see them. But Matthew or Saint John, rather, eight thirty-two says, "And ye shall know the truth, and that the truth will set you free." And I thank God for the freedoms in this nation today. Because like you black and white people did today, others that came this way, they believed in what was right, what was just, and what God approved of. Paul to the Galatians said, "For God is not mocked, for whatsoever a man so that shall he also reap." So we are noticing the fulfillment of divine prophecy. Now let that be recorded in the records. Thank you.
Two or a second. Are there any other citizens who wish to be heard at this time? Seeing that, we'll move on to the city manager's report. We'll be captain, our identity city manager who presents.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The Malestifier Police Department will be hosting their annual Battle of the Badger Blood Drive on Wednesday, July twenty-eighth from ten AM until three PM in the City Hall Annex Multipurpose Room located at three hundred North Lee Street. City employees, retirees, their families and friends, as well as members of the general public are invited to give the gift of blood at this event. The American Red Cross continues to experience a severe blood shortage that is negatively affecting blood product availability across the country in Loudoun County. Donors of all blood types, especially type O, and those given platelets are urged to make an appointment. Please go to the redcrossblood.org. And just a quick update on our four employees, um, that were injured last Monday, our four first responders. Two still remain hospitalized, but one that was previously released had surgery today and is doing very well. He will stay overnight and he will hopefully be released again in the morning. Our VPD officer is recovering at home, and we especially want to give thanks to the community for all the support received over the past week and a half. It has been extremely grateful and humbling. The funds that was set up at Guarding Men to benefit of the four individuals as of this morning is at thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, thank you. We'll move on to council comments. If council doesn't mind, I'll lead with a couple of quick points, uh, just a word of caution. Uh, my report that I received this morning, there have been ninety-two new cases of COVID-19 in Loudoun County since the last seven days. Please continue to be cautious and courteous to those around you if you're sick of, and results of holiday travel. I think the world's opened up this summer. Um, there's also a rhythm cutting underway right now. We're gonna miss the actual cutting, but the celebration goes on till seven thirty for the Selby Museum at the corner of, or maybe on one twenty-fourth or Patterson Street. I'm sure these ladies would love me to drop by and show you support. I think it goes on till seven thirty. And finally, this Sunday at four, we're gonna say our heartfelt advice to the former councilman in American Pro Town, Lieutenant Junior, to the service that we had Union Cathedral Church on East Hill Avenue. And it truly was a wonderful life of service in defense of this country and service to this community, as well as I wanted to recognize that fact. Counsel, any other council comments?
Sir, I would like to say also, uh, to everyone, our hearts are heavy. Since the dean was, was a great leader in the city of Valdosta slash Loudoun County. I also want to salute our chief of the fire department and our chief of the police department when our officers were injured, how they grounded as a family. And to see the support that came out that evening in this effort. And to see how the chief, old us chief, stood there and greeted those families. And to see this little girl that was six years old say, "I want my daddy." That brought so many tears to my eyes. And again, those that pray for our work, our workers, our firemen, and our police department young men, continue to pray for those young men because they do so much for us. And when one hurt, all of us hurt because we're connected to the head, we're connected to the arm. And again, we should applaud our chiefs, the companions there, they did a tremendous job of supporting. Also, I'm ten GMA's and agree with what I bear said, we gotta be very careful here on Loudoun slash Loudoun County with this virus. Uh, we have at this time in the state of Georgia with seven percent of deaths and it's rising daily. And also, Mayor, city managers, we gotta make sure all our nine, our EMS and nine-one-one employees are vaccinated. Because if they are not vaccinated and they get COVID and they got to be at home, who's gonna manage the system? So we gotta reach out, and that's one of the things that GMA is asking, that we make sure all of our EMS and our nine-one-one operators have taken their vaccines. Because without them, our city will hurt. And we also gotta realize that Jacksonville, Alabama, and going toward Red Cross, we're connected, and that area is booming with this virus. And young people, grandparents, aunties, cousins, whoever, if you've got young people's eighteen years old, sixteen, please take a re-vaccine, they want. Because they, they are the one that is affecting our seniors. And our seniors are catching it from our younger people. And also, GMA stated, you could be have taken the vaccine and you still can take it COVID with this, this Delta virus that's going around now. I'm not here to battle anyone here. I'm pleading that we can all reach out to our community. And I'm reaching my community, when I say I African-Americans, we are at higher risk because we have diabetes, we're overweight, and all, we have high blood pressure and everything that goes around in our families. And if we don't protect each other, and if we don't talk about this daily to save our own, we are at fault. We can't point fingers anywhere, we are at fault. I'm not, again, I just want to say thank you for what we're doing and continue to make sure that we recover by getting these vaccines taken. Uh, the GMA is pushing that on our back because I'm the board, and I'm pleased with our pastors, our community leaders, DJ, and et cetera, to help us get these young people vaccinated in our city of Valdosta. Thank you.
That's all.
One more thing, and let's thank our health workers because they are the one that's taking care of us. And if you, like we tell our, our wounded health boys guys and our military, thank you for serving. When you see our health workers, tell them thank you for serving. If they in line and you can afford to buy them a cup of coffee, and a cup of coffee, because those people are working hard to take care of us. Thank you. I should, um...
Any other counsel comments at this time?
Hey, one more.
Thank you.
I know we've, we've seen a lot of outreach by our firemen, these officers who were hurt. So I just want to make sure that anyone who can, if you can give, send a word of encouragement, a letter, email, or text, or whatever you know someone, y'all can see if we can help you. But these, uh, these, this is not, these areas weren't small areas, so these people are gonna be dealing with them for a long time. Also, April also, Councilwoman, say.
Where, where, where are we using the knowledge?
Guardian Bank. Going in bank pass. If you, if you look on my page, that shit is a little big. Um, also, um, they could want our favor, one else, we, we need to take this virus very seriously. The last thing we want is another shutdown. Ninety-five percent of the people who were being admitted are being admitted under the Delta virus, and they're younger people, they're not older people. Ninety-five percent of the deaths are the Delta virus, Delta variant. So we want to make sure we take that seriously. I want to thank DJ and his group showing, just for showing the tenacity and the will of why to continue to do what the Black folks you thought was right. Also want to thank the council for voting the way they did. And also want to ask y'all one other question. Think about it. Prior to the Georgia flag being changed, stores and bars for everything, you couldn't turn a corner without a city. Now, you're hard pressed to find one of those Georgia flags. Ask ourselves why? We are dead business. We can show people we're better than you. We love where you live. That's what I was hoping. Let's show you, all people, that we want to love where we live by changing some of the stuff that we have on. Thank you.
Counselor, there's one out front, there's one in my office.
I just talked about it. It's more basically the city of Valdosta than just city hall.
We had all our business that I, I would urge them along with you to handle there. Correct. Counsel, any other counsel comments at this time?
I got one more. Taylor, stand please.
Are you gonna do this, or?
Uh, I am. Uh, you are?
Taylor Harzell.
Uh, this is our, one of our, hmm. She is so special to me, and, and she's gonna be leaving us, and this is her last council meeting with us. So as you go out, tell her thank you.
This remains standing?
She has a smile that will warm your heart. She is so special.
Thank you. Counselor, good evening, thank you. Counselor, good evening, thank you. All of y'all, I'm gonna take a motion, please.
Two more.
Yes.
I made Catherine Harris and Reverend Rose proud. I'm excited, I'm bubbling over that we was able to accomplish it. And we're not done. We are far from done and we're gonna continue to move forward and get things done and we're gonna continue to move forward, uh, healing our city. And how we gonna do that? We're gonna do it all the same time.
I wanna thank you for all the work that you've done. Thank you so much.
Just something, sir.
All right, things good, my brother.
Share that with us in the, um, in the, uh, change the name of Ford Street and also share it with, uh, Jennifer.
We are live on Facebook.
We're live on Facebook.
Yes, sir. So it's already there.
Okay, I'm coming on the video.
Oh, yeah. Gotcha. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Okay, okay. She, the one from W, the one from W A O building, she wanna, she wants that for tonight.
Okay.
For both of them.
Gotcha, okay. Hey, what's up? How you doing? They doing what I do. How you doing? Everything rolling good for you? All right. When you gonna grow a bit more? God bless all of us with what we have.
Excuse me, sir.
Yeah, yes, sir. Once again, this is the Get To Free Press. I'm George Foster Rhymes and I just want you all to hear from. How you doing, Dr. No?
Cannot complain, George. It's always good to see you.
Good, man. Good, good. Thank you, sir. Mayor, how you doing? You got any words you wanna say?
No, it was another good council meeting, another good [inaudible]. The citizens around us are saying they're now viewing that we're following up with everybody that had a concern during the council of comments and the citizens are being hurt as well. So I, this is good government right here when everybody is, uh, is getting their questions on, except for you, of course.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, George.
That's, uh, Scott James Matheson, and we wanna commend him. Oh, yeah, thank you. We wanna thank him for serving as an elected official in Valdosta and Dallas County, Georgia. And once again, this is the Get To Free Press. I'm George Foster Rhymes and we report what others ignore. I'm trying to get.
The basis fell one off and all I'm saying is that we could possibly think about having an opportunity to just say, you know what, we're gonna set it straight. I could tell you, we're gonna set, we're gonna set this straight. We're gonna put a sign, put a proclamation, we're gonna make it.
Yeah, I get, I understand. Like, like I said, name it free, we said it free. Yeah, name Oak Street after him. Nathan B. Forrest.
But that don't make any sense.
It does make sense.
You're gonna take Forest Street and here, you change Forest Street over here.
No, 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 no. Oak Street, name it after him.
Name Oak Street?
Yeah, after, after.
Like change the street to Forest?
If, if that's what you wanna do.
No, no, I'm just saying, what, what does that mean? What does it do to change from one Forest Street to another?
No, 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 no. I'm saying, if you, between permission, wanna change a street, you're Forrest, you're-
I'm just trying to uphold a legacy. I wasn't trying to do anything.
I understand, I'm, I'm saying, if you wanna uphold your legacy.
You don't wanna uphold the street?
Listen to me.
I'm asking.
Listen to me first. If you wanna uphold that, your legacy, change Oak Street to Forrest, to your Forrest. Nathan B. Forrest over here, we gonna change that. That's the grand one. It makes sense.
So you want to change the street that says Forest over here to another street that says Forrest over here?
No, you're missing it. You're missing it.
You just said change.
You're not, no, no.
You just said change.
You're hearing, you're hearing what you wanna hear. Now, listen to me and I'm gonna tell you again. Nathan Bedford Forrest, that's the street, Forest Street, the name now. We wanted to, we, we're ready to like to change that to, listen to me.
Yes, sir.
Listen to me. They voted tonight to change that. Now.
Correct.
Your Forrest, the one that you dug up.
Anybody could dug up.
Wait a minute, on your mess. This, this is me now. If you wanna honor him, if you, if you wanna erect a monument, go over there and yell back the church. You're right back. Please, I'm making tonight by doing something else, remember?
That's right, I, that's what I'm saying is it's changed, keeping the name that, that was changed to two Rs in seventy-seven. Okay, up until seventy-seven, it was spelled with one R.
Okay, but again.
You know, I mean, I'm not being funny, Nate, Nathan Bedford Forrest's last name was spelled with two Rs.
Okay.
Albert Forrest's last name was spelled with two Rs. Up until seventy-seven, it was spelled one R. And that's not me saying, that's just simply, that's simply maps. I mean, that's maps. That's not me, that's the sampling maps, that's the insurance maps, that's not me. I'm not, I'm not making that up at all. I'm just simply going, I print these off online, these are maps online that show that Forrest, DJ, DJ couldn't even believe it. DJ was like, "Are you kidding me?" I was like, "Yeah." So what I'm saying is that in seventy-seven, for whatever reason, seventy-seven, it went from one R to two Rs. Why? I'm, I don't know. I'm not concerned about that. All I was saying is that we have an opportunity to just simply set the record straight. But hey, you know what? Let's highlight Albert Forrest. Let's start with this son of a bitch. Let's put signs up, let's do a proclamation, let's make it.
Yeah, Oak Street. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, everything there, proclamation, everything on the street. Let, Nathan B. Forrest.
So you'd rather just put up one sign up for, for Albert Forrest instead of a whole street for Albert Forrest?
No, 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 no.
Now, I'm asking a question. I asked you your questions now, I'm asking your question. Would you rather just put up one sign for Albert Forrest and you just wanna honor, take a, take a great leader of this community and just simply put up a plaque for him? And I'm offering renaming a whole street for you.
Now, what street you gonna name?
I'm talking about Forest Street that is, is now.
It's not, you can't name Nathan B. Forrest.
It ain't Nathan B. Forrest.
Okay. Do what you wanna do, it's your plan. Implement your plan on Oak Street. We done what we gonna do tonight, okay?
Right.
Yeah.
May I ask you a que, Councilman? Yes, may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you have some information and you presented extremely well and as I stated, you have a right to do what you did and I appreciate it. I'm not saying that as a cover. I honestly mean that. I appreciate you standing up for what you believe in because that's what the country's all about. But my problem is, and I, I want you to respond to this because I think people wanna know, from the time of this black forest until today, why is it that nobody have given him the credit for being a great person in history until the, the renaming of Forest Street till Barack Obama came up? Why, why didn't he, why was he not recognized before? How many years, decades passed?
Question that you, you need to ask the people that live on that street as well.
Well, I'm asking you because you was here in this town at least for a year.
The reason why I, the reason why I started digging into it is whenever it was vaulted before us and it was vaulted before us saying that it was named after a KKK member, which is, you know, which, I mean, I-
Well, I was taught that in, in, in history. In history, I was taught that.
Wait a minute, brother, wait a minute, you can't, you can get it. Go ahead.
And all I did was start thinking, because I'm a history teacher as well, and I started thinking, man, I mean, if, if it is named after that, then of course it should be changed. Told DJ that. But at the same time, though, I just wanna know, was it? I mean, is it? I don't know. So after I started doing some digging, doing some research, doing some stuff, I never could find like anything and then I found articles that Dr. No wrote that says he couldn't find anything, other articles said they couldn't find anything, DJ said they couldn't find anything that's far as Nathan Bedford Forrest. I'm just saying, I'm just repeating.
Okay, Councilman Gibbs.
Then, I just was like, okay, let me, let me research Albert Forrest and just see if there's anything on Albert Forrest and I couldn't find anything. Only thing I found was is that in nineteen seventy-seven, it went from Forrest with one R to Forrest with two Rs. And then I was like, why is that? So I called up the, I called up the city and I said, "I just wanna see if these maps are correct." And they was like, "Hey, we've got some inspection reports that show that in nineteen sixty-nine, it was spelled with one R." And it signed off in nineteen sixty-nine. We've got another inspection, one R. We got a nineteen seventy, right here, nineteen seventy down here, signed off by North Cut that shows where it's spelled with one R. And all I'm saying is that, okay, so up until at least nineteen seventy and then seventy-seven with the map, this is the, this is the map right here. I mean, it ain't the map I, I mean, it's the, right there, August of nineteen seventy-seven, that it shows where it's spelled with one R. And that's where I was showing DJ and I said, "You know what? We don't know why it got changed to two Rs and I'm not here, 'cause I, I didn't come here till nineteen ninety-eight. I'm, I'm from Tooms County and I came here to go to VCU and graduate and stayed here." All I was saying is that, you know what? We have, we have an opportunity, that's what I told DJ. I said, "Look, y'all worked really hard. You raised the three thousand dollars. You can take that three thousand, take Barack Obama Boulevard's name, put it on another street that you feel that it needs to be on, whatever street you feel. Take and honor this street that's right here now. Honor him, put plaques up, we'll put plaques up, the city will, we'll bronze plaques, we'll set it in stone, we'll do a proclamation, we'll roll the, I mean, basically just saying, we don't have, there is no record up until, we don't have nothing but like hearsay as to what we think it is. But from this time point on, it is Albert Forrest because of what all he's done. Then you take your money, you take the name and then you go for another street." Because I said, "You've already got a list of other streets you want, that you wanna change, right?" And he goes, "Yeah." I said, "Then utilize it on another street. You've already got the hard part done, which is the three thousand."
Councilman Gibbs.
That was it.
Okay, Councilman Gibbs, this is live on Facebook and, uh, I want you to understand again, I appreciate.
Yes, sir.
Your stand and I appreciate you explaining to the people that are watching your point of view. This is what I believe in freedom of the press really is, that we give both sides. And I wanna commend you for having the patience, the patriotism to stand before the camera and give your point of view live on Facebook because this is what I believe in. But now, I, I'm gonna ask you this question, I'm through, then y'all can get back together. My question is, we have a lot of other streets that name not the Confederate people that then murdered black folk outright and they are a disgrace too. So my last question to you, are you gonna work as vigorously to get those streets changed?
I, yeah, whatever I need to do.
Okay. I wanna thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Once again, this is the Get To Free Press. I'm George Foster Rhymes and I just want the truth to be out, not by a dog.
Thank you. Mayor, uh-
Councilman Gibbs.
I wanna share some information that I have shared with, uh, Councilman Howard and Councilman Bickers and Councilman Carroll. I also spoke to DJ about it the other day as well. Uh, me and him met in person about it, uh, spoke about it, uh, had a good conversation. Uh, he said he was gonna share this information with Kiki. I don't know if he actually shared it or not with Kiki, but he said he was. Take it from your expression, he didn't. I mean, basically just saying, we don't have, there is no record up until, we don't have nothing but like hearsay as to what we think it is. But from this point on, it is Albert Forest because of what all he's done. Then you take your money, you take the name, and then you go for another street. Because I said, you've already got a list of other streets you want, that you want to change, right? And he goes, yeah. I said, then utilize it on another street. You've already got the hard part done, which is the $3,000.
Councilman Gibbs.
That was it.
Okay, Councilman Gibbs. This is live on Facebook and I want you to understand again, I appreciate...
Yes, sir.
...your stand and I appreciate you explaining to the people that are watching your point of view. This is what I believe in freedom of the press really is, that we give both sides. And I want to commend you for having the patience, the patriotism to stand before the camera and give your point of view live on Facebook. Because this is what I believe in. But now, I, I'm going to ask you this question. I'm through, then y'all can get back together. My question is, we have a lot of other streets that named after Confederate people that murdered black folk outright. And they are a disgrace too. So my last question to you, are you going to work as vigorously to get those streets changed?
Yeah, whatever I need to do.
Okay. I want to thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Once again, this is the Get Two Free Press. I'm George Foster Rhimes and I just want the truth to be out, not by a God.
Mayor...
That's what I'm getting.
I want to share some information that I have shared with Councilman Howard and Councilman Bickers and Councilman Carroll. I also spoke to DJ about it the other day as well. Me and him met in person about it. We spoke about it, had a good conversation. He said he was going to share this information with Kiki. I don't know if he actually shared it or not with Kiki, but he said he was. Take it from your expression, he didn't.